You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next, the April 20th meeting of the LaPorte County Commissioners. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www accesseslaporte county dot org.
Good evening, everyone. We're a minute late, but we're here to start our meeting of the LaPorte County Commissioners. It's Wednesday, April 20th, and I'd like to call our meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the principle which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Mathias.
Present.
Commissioner Morzynski.
Present.
Commissioner Haney.
Present.
All three present.
Next, I'd like to consider the agenda.
Recording in progress.
Whoops. Okay. Next, I'd like to consider the agenda. We're at the Wednesday, April 20th, meeting of the LaPorte County Commissioners. I'd like to consider the agenda. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions?
And move to approve the agenda as presented.
Madam President, may I add a addition to the agenda?
So we have a motion. Mr. Haney just made a motion. Would you like to -- you're not going to second his motion until you amend?
No, I wanted to add something to the agenda.
Okay. Go ahead, please.
Under New Vegas, I'd like to add to 11F for introduction and review only. Resolution initiating action for removal of LaPorte County Auditor Timothy Stamos from public office pursuant to Indiana Code Section 36-2-8.7, style of recommendation to approve the agenda as amended.
Can you repeat that code section, please?
Mr. Morzynski, can you repeat the code, please?
Yeah, sure. Code Section 36-2-8.7.
Thank you. Any other additions, corrections, or deletions? We have a motion on the floor to accept the agenda, and now we've had it edited or amended. So I would accept a motion to accept the amended agenda.
Motion to accept amended agenda.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
No.
I'll second it. All those in favor of the agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign for?
Neg.
Nay. Okay. We have two ayes and a nay. Mr. Stamos, if you could, since we have a member that is not here, if you can go ahead and call roll call agenda on that item, please.
Commissioner Morzynski.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Nay.
Commissioner Mathias.
Aye. Next on our agenda, consider approval of the April 6, 2022 commission meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the minutes of our April 6 meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have carried. Motion has been approved. Next on our agenda, consideration of claims, both payroll and operating expenses. Mr. Auditor.
Commissioners, we have payroll for the period ending April 8, 2022, in the amount of $1,263,937.88, and we have operating expense claims in the amount of $4,337,338.96.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the claims, both payroll and operating expenses. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Joe, yeah?
Aye.
Okay. We have three ayes. The ayes have it. Motion has been approved. Next on our agenda, we have public comment, and while we have removed our three-minute clock, I would ask that you try to keep your comments germane and civil and respectful to everyone in the room. We aren't going to be attacking people. You can save that for your political comments other places, but this is a business meeting, and so we'd like to try to be respectful. So are there members of the public either on Zoom or in the room who would like to speak at this time?
Hello.
Hello. My name is Sheri Banek. I live at 4551 South 75 West in LaPorte. I was at the last meeting, and I'm here because I'm concerned about the Meadowview No-Walk subdivision drainage plan that you guys have in place. I'm the first home site after this drain waterfall outlet, and we're just really concerned because of the amount of water that could probably take place moving from the creek all the way to our property, as well as flood the remaining home sites downstream in the Kingsbury area and throughout. I know we came to the meeting last time. You guys suggested a workshop. We haven't heard anything about a workshop yet with the surveyor, the engineer, as well as who's going to be in charge of this. So we would really like to be involved in this because we're really concerned about the amount of water that could possibly, you know, intrude our properties. I understand from the last meeting, I kind of even question if this drain is necessary because it seemed like a lot of the people out there in the subdivision, they're not even using their sub pumps. So I question, why are we doing this drain if property owners on the backside of No-Walk Drive aren't even using their sub pumps? Their basements are finished. There was a home that went on the market this week had a finished basement. So I question why this project is even necessary. So just if you wouldn't mind keeping us updated on when we could do a workshop, we'd really appreciate it.
So just FYI, after the meeting, I did send Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Hendricks a note asking them to schedule a meeting in mid-May, right after, you know, the start of the month. So we will make sure that you're informed.
Okay. Do you have an idea when the project's supposed to be started? Because we sure don't want to do the workshop after it's already started.
Yeah, I don't have that information, but I don't know if anyone in the room can attest to that. But if you want information, Mr. Sullivan is there, and he can speak to you about that.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks. Any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Is there anyone on Zoom? Oh.
Madam President, Alan Stevens, President, LaPorte County Republican Party. I've listened to the news this week. I've listened to the radio, and I've heard Commissioner Morzynski question Auditor Stamos. Yeah, we all know there was a mistake in the office, and I think he owns up for it. But there was a mistake that slipped through multiple levels, multiple cracks. That being said, Commissioner Morzynski is questioning the amount of time that Auditor Stamos is spending in the office. I mean, we all sat here for 10 minutes and witnessed the clown show going on with the audio video so we could accommodate him from his home in Florida. It's disgraceful to sit and listen to it. It's disgraceful to sit and listen to Rich question anybody's time in the office when him and his wife have moved to Florida. So I would, you know, there's several people wearing Hawaiian shirts here tonight, and that's in honor of Rich's move to Florida. We wish him the best of luck down there.
Thank you, sir. Without any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to speak? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on. Next on the agenda, we have department head reports. If you are a department head and have a business report, please feel free to approach.
Good evening, Commissioners. Barb Houston, 911. As you all know, last week was National Dispatchers Week, and it was a great success, and the overwhelming response from departments and the public was amazing. Thanks to everyone for their generous donations, donations, food, and heartfelt words of appreciation for the work the dispatchers do. It was a memorable week, and thank you for recognizing the heroes behind the headset. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb.
Thank you.
They are indeed heroes behind the headset. Thank you. If you could introduce yourself and your department, please.
My name is Joey Winskey, and I am the Treasurer of LaPorte County, and I'm here along with Auditors Tim Stamos and Assessor Mike Schultz. We, the three of us together, represent the, excuse me, financial arm of the LaPorte County Government. Everyone has heard about the mistake that was made, so I wanted to read, first of all, a release from, that we released today to the media, and then I want to go further and explain kind of a little bit about the process. We're not blaming anyone. I want that to be first and foremost. The press release read, "Due to a mistake in the calculation of the 2021 payable 2022 tax bills, the LaPorte County Auditor will be recalculating bills in the coming weeks. The error was a miscalculation of deductions. Because the issue was widespread, we believe the overall rate has been affected. The LaPorte County Government is working in a coordinated effort, along with the State of Indiana, to resolve this issue as quickly and efficiently as possible. New tax bills will be sent out to all the taxpayers in the next several weeks. We anticipate probably the end of May, first part of June. We encourage all taxpayers to pay the current installment of the spring bill and, let's see, installment of the bill you have already received prior to the May 10 deadline. This is an evolving issue, and we will continue to issue statements as more information is available." I want to add to that that we have been in contact with the Department of Local Government Finance, the arm of the state government that controls the budget and the financial part of county government, along with state government. The Auditor of State has also been in contact with us, and we're working with both entities to solve this problem. Excuse me. We've had three meetings with the DLGF so far, and we intend to have as many as necessary to get this ball rolling and get this fixed, this glitch fixed as quickly as possible. Mike and I have been working with Tim, and I don't know if you all know this, but Mike is a former auditor also. So we're all working together to get this done for the taxpayers, really. So I wanted to just tell you a little bit about the process and what has happened so far. The tax bills were mailed on Friday, April 8, and they were mailed by L&amp;D Mailmasters, who are vendors. They're in New Albany, Indiana. By Sunday night, April 10, many of us were already receiving inquiries about the increase in the tax bills. Monday morning, the Assessor, Treasurer, and Auditor were receiving multiple calls about the increase. Tuesday morning, Commissioner Mathias called a meeting of the Treasurer, Assessor, and Auditor to discuss and understand why this has happened. As we all know, the Assessor, Auditor, and Treasurer, along with the Council, is the financial arm of the county government. The taxing process begins with the Assessor, who assesses all the properties and assigns a value to each parcel. Those values are sent to the Auditor, who then applies all qualified exemptions, deductions, and calculates the taxes. The Treasurer then receives the information from the Auditor to print and mail bills to the taxpayers. The process is completed when the Treasurer collects and posts the payments. This problem happened in the Auditor's office, which the Auditor himself has admitted and admits that it was his responsibility. It happened during the process of certifying the net assessed values, also known as CNAVs. A crucial step was missed that should have updated all the properties with homestead deductions to the new values. This must be done before tax rates can be set. Since this step was missed, the DLGF, the Department of Local Government Financing, was given the wrong information, which resulted in incorrect tax rates and miscalculations. Because of an error in the application of the homestead and supplemental homestead deductions, the department is asking the County Auditor to recertify the net assessed values for each taxing unit in the county. This process will then allow the department to recertify the rates of all local governments or units, as well as to amend the DLGF budget order, which that's what we operate from. This will also provide the county the opportunity to resubmit their abstract to the Indiana Auditor of State's office and reissue corrected tax bills. Local units should be prepared to receive a new 1782 notice. That's the notice that every government entity in the county receives that proposes the revenue levy and the budget for the coming year for the county and each taxing unit. Right now, we don't have a budget that's certified to work from. I just want you to know that. This is from the department, and from the department, we will process new rates. Lastly, I'd like to discuss the financial impact to the county, as well as to those taxpayers who have mortgages. And I know that was a question on Facebook that I read this afternoon. I estimate that this would cost the county up to $100,000 in vendor fees and postage. Our mailing of the tax bills and processing of them is going to cost over $50,000. Since we've already paid that once, we're going to have to pay it again. They're not going to do it for free. I'm also including--
May I ask a question? Is the 100 a total, including the 50, or is there additional 50?
Well, we're hoping. It's in addition to the 50 we've already paid.
Okay.
We're going to have to also include LAU and associates in that. We'll have to include SEH, who helps us with the budget and helps us with TIF incremental For those who have mortgages, I would recommend that you contact your mortgage lender to discuss the impact to your escrow. Oftentimes, mortgage companies will review the escrow account at the end of the first spring installment, and they'll either raise or lower based on what your taxes are. So if your taxes go up, they usually raise your escrow to cover that. Now, we don't know if that's going to happen for sure, and right now, my office is putting a letter together to send to all escrow companies, to mortgage companies, banks. We have a whole list. So we're going to try to cover those bases and circumvent that before any escrow is raised. I'd like to encourage taxpayers to pay the first half of their current spring bill. Ultimately, the new bills are approved and sent out. Their bills will, wait, let me reread that. Ultimately, after the new bills are approved and sent out, their bills will be corrected and reflected on either the fall installment of this year or next year's bill. The DLGF will be releasing a timeline and process guidelines in the next few days. We'll remain in contact with the Commissioners, Councils, Attorneys, as well as the public and media as more information becomes available. And now, Commissioner Mathias, I'd like to answer the questions that you had.
So may I ask a clarifying question about people paying their bill? So I'm getting lots and lots of questions about this. If they pay their bill and it is a lower payment than is actually due, that'll be tapped on to the fall. They will not have to pay another amount this spring. Is that what I'm hearing?
It won't be tapped on to the, if it's lower. What will happen is if the bill will be corrected for the fall. That's the first thing.
Okay.
If it's an overpayment on their part, it will create a surplus on their account, and sometime after the fall bills are paid, if there's still surplus on that account, we will be sending out letters that, and you have to do this, a letter that they sign that certifies that they're the owner of the property and that they have the right to collect that surplus. And then we will issue those surpluses in conjunction with the auditor who writes those checks. So the first process is, let's see what happens. Second is, if there's a surplus, we'll be happy to refund that money.
I think we should clarify one thing, and Joey, if you disagree with this, just say so. I don't think that we expect there to be surpluses because we expect to issue a reconciling tax bill fairly pronto, and so the amount, the additional amount that someone would owe would exactly equal their tax liability with the fall payment that is due, and so there shouldn't really be surpluses. There might be a surplus. So if you disagree with that, go ahead and, you know, say it, but based upon understanding of what the bill will be issuing over the, roughly six weeks or whatever.
What will happen is they'll get a credit on their fall bill. They won't necessarily, I mean, some of the bills that we've seen are only maybe a $4 difference. So that won't take care of the whole bill in the fall, but it'll issue a $4 surplus or $4 credit. Let's say it that way. But until we get this process started and completed, I really don't think we can estimate that what their taxes are going to be yet. But we will work together, the three of us, on this.
Their payment is going to be in this calculation of the new--
If you could use the mic, please.
The payment, so if they make a $500 payment and they really only owed $487 when they, it's going to show in the bill that they made a $500 payment. So it's not going to, like, they have to call, or it's going to be somewhere else. So it's going to be calculated, but if the new bill is $487 each half, $487 is going to appear on the fall installment as well. And then the calculation of the payment will go in there to see if it's an overpayment, it's a wash, or if it's an underpayment.
Thank you.
So the next question was, why should people pay their bills? The answer is, tonight, you just voted on, I think it was $5.6 or $5.7 million for claims and payroll. The way we operate is that we get, we collect the taxes, and those taxes go for operating expenses. So I don't know if all the $4.3 million was from the general fund, but I'm going to guess right now that the general fund is getting pretty low because we're at the end of the tax cycle. Actually, it's at the beginning of the tax cycle, but the end of our first six months of settlement payments. So we need that, we need people to pay their, and this goes for the cities, the towns, the townships. We all need the tax, yeah, the schools especially. That goes, that tax collection goes to pay those expenses. So if people could pay, continue to pay from their spring bill that they already received, we, and I'm speaking for all employees here, we'd all appreciate that so we can be paid and, you know, keep going. If you all remember that the tax mess that we were in nine years ago, we had to borrow money from different accounts to fund the operation of the county government. We're lucky because we could borrow from ourselves, but not everybody can. Townships, and if there's any township trustee here, they can attest to the fact that they run on a shoestring. The cities are just catching up from the first fiasco that we had in 2013. Actually, 20, it was from 2006 through 2014, my second year as auditor. So that's why we, that's why we're encouraging people to pay their bills so that we can continue providing--
Right. The county's one thing, but when we were on the call, Mayor Dermody was extremely perturbed that his city's draw would not be in place so that they couldn't meet payroll on their bond debts and vendors. So how do we, and then he asked, would there be, if there's a penalty, would the county assume that because it was our mistake? So how does, how do we answer those kinds of questions? Because it's libraries. I don't know that people understand. It's libraries, school districts all across the county, and all the towns and cities, small and large.
Not to mention our police departments. That includes LaPorte, that includes Michigan City, it includes Westville, it includes us, the county. You know, that's number one, as far as I'm concerned, is public safety. And it'll also affect the EMS. So that's what we need. There is a stipulation or a statute, rather, that says that taxing entities, taxing units can borrow from the Indiana Bond Bank, or they can ask for an advance draw from the county. Now, in order to do that, though, you have to have a pretty hefty collection so that you can even give a partial advance. You can't do that. That's something that the auditor and treasurer have to work together on to give them an advance. If they borrow from the Indiana Bond Bank, then we're probably going to be liable for the interest because this wasn't their fault, this is our fault. And so that's another cost you can add to that. That's what I just talked about.
So in other words, that's why people should pay their taxes in advance. They care about their school districts, and they care about their libraries, and their, you know, firefighters and EMS. They need to pay so we can meet our obligations.
And let me tell you that as of today, we've collected about $11 million. Our normal collection for the April 15 through the May 10 deadline is normally about between $75 to $90 million. Last year, at the end of our tax collection, we collected $90 million. So if you just put that in perspective, you know, we have a couple of weeks left, so we're hoping. Our mail has not been as heavy as it was last year, so I'm just keeping my fingers crossed. So the next, and that, I want to clarify, Auditor Stamos just asked me if we were going to talk about the advance or the pre-settlement money. That's called, it's called an advance. That's what I was talking about. Okay. So then the next question was, or I want to, let me keep going on this question that says why you should pay your bills. May 10 is the statutory deadline for paying your spring taxes. During COVID, we had a one-time extension for people to pay their taxes of June 20, I think it was. Is that right, or June 10? Anyway, it was a one-time extension. They're not going to give us this. That was asked of the DLGF, and they said, no, you have to, you're going to have to put the penalties on. But there is a provision in the law, I see 6-1-1, 15-12, that allows the county to remove penalties for an objective error only. I have in my office, and I don't know if you have it, but--
Yes, I do.
--there are statute that deals with the removal of penalties, and if anybody would like to see that, they're welcome to call one of us and get that. We consider this an objective error. So the provision or statute reads that the auditor, treasurer, along with the council, can pass a resolution that will allow us to remove penalties. However, if you have a penalty on your tax bill right now for not paying previous taxes, we cannot remove that. What we're planning on doing is, after the DLGF allows us to calculate, send out the bills, we will also be including a date in those bills that say, that says, if you pay by this date, and that date is yet to be determined, we will remove any penalties incurred. Okay. So we're hoping to do that sooner than later. And then after we collect all the money, it goes to the Auditor's office for settlement, and that's another thing we'll have to work out with the entities. So that's-- So that's a.
You probably should add the notion that the treasurer and I, since we have the purview over requesting waiver of penalties and the council has to prove it, have also discussed incorrect, this is wrong, Joey. We're encouraging people to pay the current incorrect tax bill because the preliminary statistics shows for the homesteaders that the typical bill is only off by perhaps 2% to 4%. It's from what the corrected bill, not in all cases, but in many cases will be off by a small amount. In fact, the bill may be exactly right because some people are capped and paying the 1% gross assessed value. They're capped, they're hitting their property tax cap. Their taxes may not change at all because they're paying 1% of gross assessed value. Mike's assessed values are completely correct. And so, so the point about that is that if they pay that incorrect amount, and it goes up or goes down by a small amount or whatever amount, if they in good faith pay that incorrect bill they have right now, we're encouraging them to pay that amount because when we send the updated bill in several weeks, they can, what are we going to come before the council with, to say that they can make the fall payment as long as they made that spring payment, even if it's incorrect in good faith? If they make the fall payment, then the rest of what's due by the fall deadline, there'll be no penalties in that case either. Is that the understanding?
As long as they pay their bill, that's what we're hoping. And we're hoping that the council will agree with us. The tax rate for every entity has to be recalculated. I'm hoping that they don't go any farther than that, but they could ask us to all redo our budgets, so we're, keep our fingers crossed on that. So let's see. I already talked about the mortgage, contact your mortgage companies to tell them what's happening. And we just covered the penalties. We're hoping that the council, if they, we can't put it on their agenda for Monday because that's already set, and we have to have a notice sent out for that. So we're hoping that they'll have a special meeting to address this.
Thank you.
So are there any other questions that we can answer?
Mr. Haney?
Just for the edification of our local homeowners here, because we talked a lot about a different bunch of different government entities that really isn't going to affect their daily lives. Just for clarification for them, I know you said, reach out to peoples, you know, possibly reach out to your mortgage company or whatnot. I know for myself, for as many years as I can remember living here in the state of Indiana, dozens of years going back, every year my property taxes have gone up, wherever I've lived, whether it's here, you know, next door in Porter County, every, you know, whichever house it's been in, it's gone up every year because the value of the house goes up. So your assessed value goes up, you pay a little more in taxes every year. There is, there are some years when, you know, if it just goes up by a smaller amount, you know, your escrow doesn't change at all. And from what I'm hearing and from what I'm seeing, you know, if you're talking about a deviation of about $20 roughly plus or minus for most homeowners, and some did kind of fall outside that, but for most homeowners, deviation of about $20, you know, in either direction. So when talking about their bill being incorrect, for the vast majority of homeowners in this county, it's going to be, you know, a $20 discrepancy plus or minus, you know.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, it should be, hopefully, right. So it's not a huge amount, which for most homeowners with most of their mortgages, may not even affect their escrow at all because it's within that buffer level from year to year that's set, it's the maximum minimum amount. We won't get into all that.
The median, if I may, the median difference as we understand it now is $32, so $20.
$32, okay.
That's the median, that's the midpoint of the differences as we understand them now.
All right. So I think, I think to your point, because there's a lot of information thrown out there, you know, for the average homeowner right now, go ahead, pay, you know, pay your bill. At worst, you know, you may be paying an extra, you know, in some cases, you know, $32. That money will be credit, you know, if you paid over what was due, that'll be credited toward the fall payment, and it'll all get reconciled, no money is going to be lost. And anyway, good, there, if for some reason it's less than what you had owed, your payment was sent out, then if you acted in good faith and made your payment in a timely fashion, it sounds like, and I would, I would think the council will extend for anybody who made a good faith effort to pay, you know, a waiver of penalties, I would think.
Tim and I have already agreed on the fact that we would like to have the penalties removed.
I'm very glad to hear that. So hopefully, at least for the average homeowner out there, to realize that you pay your taxes, it's probably not going to be that big of a difference. Yes, every dollar counts, but, you know, if we're talking about $20, $30 in the grand scheme of things, but when you're talking about, you know, it's normally several hundred dollars in mortgage taxes, you know, hopefully you're, hopefully everything's going to be fine for them.
The part that concerns me is that we're living at a time right now when everything is increasing substantially. You go to the grocery store and it's about twice what you used to pay. Gas is now almost $5 a gallon in some places. I just would hate to think that we're going to compromise any taxpayer or burden them with an additional amount. So I'm just hoping that we get this done quickly, that it's not painful for anyone, and we'll move forward.
Thank you.
I want to add two points of clarification. I agree with everything Joey said, the two statements that were read. I want to add a point of clarification with regard to the units of local government that are expecting the settlement monies to come from my office, that are concerned about when they're going to get them and the lateness of them. To append to Joey's point, keep in mind that the nature of the property tax collections is that they're intended to fund government for those next six months. That's, you know, that we collect twice a year. So we're going to collect a good chunk of money, and we're encouraging the public to pay the tax bill they have right now. So we're going to get a good chunk of money, and we can give units of local government, again, an advance draw in essence of those monies based upon how much of the share of what we have collected already is their share. So we believe that we will have the money to bridge them over, even though, you know, technically people are not due to pay their taxes until they get their corrected tax bill. We're encouraging them to pay the incorrect bill for the reasons we earlier stated, and that we can use the money that we've collected, as we collect it essentially, and know which taxing entities it is attributable to, to give them an advanced draw. So cash flow issues and the needs of different entities to borrow money from the Indiana Bond Bank or other methods that will incur interest costs are, I would say at this point, unlikely. It's possible that will be needed, but that's the most likely way that this will be dealt with, is we got some money, we're going to start dishing it out, even though we're not ready for a full settlement, if that makes sense.
May I suggest, once you do have that ironed out, that you send a statement out to all of the other taxing units? Because when we were on that call the other day, there were 49 people, and many of them were extremely concerned. I received messages afterwards saying, you know, I didn't get my question answered, what if we don't get our draw in time? And so these are, you know, even Porter County Auditor was on because of the school district issue in, you know, eastern Porter County with Beverly Shores area, et cetera. So, and Pine School, I think are the two. But I think we need to give them a good faith information as best we know it so that they can, because they've got boards and citizens to talk to also and explain to them what's happening.
I think also, as soon as the DLGF puts their timeline together, I think they'll be sending out a letter to all the entities too.
Okay, great.
But that's a good point. The only thing that I am going to correct you, Tim, on is that May 10th is the statutory guideline. So when you say that they don't have to pay the bill until it's corrected, that's not true. They do have to pay by May 10th. So, and that's what Commissioner Wes Bennett was saying, that we, that I asked if they could change that guideline, or deadline, rather, and give us an extension, and they said, no, they can't do it. I think it's only the governor that can do that. So we'll just have to get it done as quickly as possible, and, right. So, and if anybody has any more questions, they can call either Mike, me, or Tim at our offices, and our staff is pretty knowledgeable, and if you don't get the answer from one, call the next one, I guess. Thank you for letting us talk.
Thank you so much.
And did you want to say anything else?
Not to muddy the waters, but statutorily, my Form 11s have to go out at the end of the month, and the Form 11 is your next year's assessment. And that's the bright green paper that everybody gets. So when you get that, that has nothing to do with this tax bill. It's next year's assessment that you'll be paying on, and you have 45 days to appeal that if you don't agree with the number. But don't confuse the two because the green sheet has nothing to do with the current tax bill.
All right. Just because this is such an important issue, are there any members of the public on Zoom or in the room that have an additional question that they would like to ask our financial team? Give you just a quick moment to ask a question.
Question?
Yes, if you could come to the mic, please.
I assume that Mr. Earl Cunningham, 6311, was right, I assume, but based on what Mr. Schultz just said, to avoid confusion, if you would just put a banner at the top of that line green statement that says this has nothing to do with the previous tax statement, it would help attract their attention to it.
It does say something in there because they're already printed in the red.
All right.
Maybe we need to have a little sticker at the top.
We might get there.
That's a good idea.
He said that Mr. Cunningham, Councilman Cunningham said that because if you'll go home and look at your tax statement, it has a pink border on it this year. I've already been in contact with our vendor that prints and mails our tax bills, and we're going to be changing that color for corrected bills.
Okay.
So.
Great. So we're all color-coded.
Yeah, right.
All right. Thank you so much, really appreciate the help.
You're welcome.
All right. Are there any other department heads who wish to speak at this time? Mr. Sullivan?
This is Jay Sullivan, the county engineer, and a couple of projects, we update some stuff we have going on. I'm sure if anybody's drive down, you know, driven down 150 North or 500 West, we have construction going on through the community crossings, Grand, about 10 miles of resurfacing. That project started early this week.
Could you pull the mic just a little closer to you? There you go.
Yeah. The project started early last week, and will be finished hopefully by the end of next week. We do have, on the Meadowview project, we had a pre-construction meeting on Monday. We're hoping to get the contractor started for the next four to six weeks on projects, you know, on that project. We'll see, see how that goes. I do have some information that I need to send to IDM yet, they've requested some stuff. They've had a lot of inquiries on the project, obviously wants more information, so I'm getting that together and have that sent out to him hopefully by tomorrow.
Okay.
Those project, that's underway. They'll be putting in the lift station, you know, hopefully within the next three weeks and get that project started. We're kind of excited about that. That's a big project, it'll help out some people in that area.
Yeah. Jay, you heard the citizen who was asking about the Meadowview pre-construction meeting. So if you and Mr. Hendricks could get that arranged, and then maybe charity and highway department can get those notices out?
We can do that. I sent out, you know, a notice where I was available. Did you want to attend the meetings?
Yeah.
Get everybody, when everybody's available.
Yeah, just go ahead and schedule it, and then we'll make sure everyone's there.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. Are there any other department heads who wish to speak at this time?
Good evening again.
Good evening.
I must say that I'm disappointed that the two of you, three commissioners, would place on your agenda in a form of ambush, a resolution, instead of putting out of the regular agenda beforehand, it speaks of turning a unfortunate situation with regard to the tax situation into politicizing it and not all working together. So with regard to the Indiana Code section you cite, that is a new section, newer section of the Indiana Code that states that a county officer must be physically present in the county officer's office during regular hours for a reasonable amount of time each month during the county officer's term of office. And a county officer may be removed from office by the court under this code if the officer is in violation of this section during one or more months of the county officer's term. I am in the office, and I am in the office daily, and I want to note that unfortunately, when you bring something like this beforehand, you are prostituting a new state law that was intended to hold people accountable for literally not showing up for work. I am in the office every day. If you go forward with reading this resolution, your actions are unconscionable. There is a lot of blame to go around if we insist on focusing on that. I stand by my chief tax deputy who was misguided, misled by the former person in her position, retired, who was also, and she was also misguided by our financial service provider who walked her through the process of creating the tax abstract over the telephone when she had insisted multiple times that that be in person because she was relatively new to the job. I didn't catch the error before the bills were sent to the treasurer. I take responsibility for that, for the treasurer to print and mail them. The treasurer didn't catch the error before sending the bills to the mailing vendor. Even the Department of Local Government Finance of the state of Indiana approved certified net assessed values that were incorrect. We need to focus on making sure this doesn't happen again rather than forming a circular firing squad. I want to point out that of the three, since January 1st of 2021, when I took office, by far, of the three members of the financial function of LaPorte County, I have been here the most total of number of aggregate hours. So your resolution needs to seek to remove all three members of the financial function of LaPorte County that apparently you're going to be reading later today. It is misguided, it is outrageous, it is outlandish, it's a violation of the intent of state law. You will compel the state legislature next year to make LaPorte County the poster child of abuse of state law, where they change the state law back because it is intended to go after someone who literally didn't show up at all. This was an honest mistake, and if you go forth with this, again, you're politicizing the situation of a property tax issue, just we should all be working together because Mr. Friedman is seeking to retaliate against me for doing a 90-minute radio show expose on him a week ago today, and because he just lost round two in his defamation suit against me. You should be ashamed of yourself, and in the case of you, Ms. Mathias, you will surely pay at the ballot box in the fall. To quote citizen Rodney McCormick, "I'm tired of Sean Friedman puppets." Thank you.
Are there any other department heads who wish to speak at this time?
Good evening. Darlene Hale, LaPorte County IT. I just want to apologize for the issue that we had earlier, just taking into consideration a lot of people use this room. TV gets moved, things get unplugged, switched around, so.
No worries.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other department heads who wish to speak at this time? Hearing none, let's go on to requests. Our first request is, consider permission to approach the council, reference the camera system and narcotics locks. Mr. McGuire, EMS director.
Last year around October, I started to begin to receive notifications from the state EMS Commission of a change that they're implementing in regards to the purchasing and handling of controlled medications for EMS agencies within Indiana. The primary objective of the state pharmacy board and the DEA, what they're trying to accomplish, is to eliminate third-party purchasing of these controlled medications, thus forcing everybody to purchase directly. So this in turn requires the purchaser to have their own state and DEA licensing and register for their own DEA numbers. So unfortunately, we do fall within this. We do use third-party for purchasing, which means in the near future, we're going to change, make several changes to be compliant with the new regulation that they're pushing forward. But prior to even being able to start the application process, we must first revise all of our policies and procedures regarding controlled medications. We have to assure all layers of security are in place and are effective, and have a training program in place, which we currently do, which addresses handling and administration of controlled substances. We can then start the process, the application process, first with the Indiana Board of Pharmacy, then secondly with the DEA. In addition, we must pass an onsite inspection. So over the past several months, we've been working on this, we reviewed our current program, our policies, procedures from top to bottom, looked at every aspect of it to make sure we're as tight and as sound as we can possibly be. We have, we do feel quite comfortable with majority of our policies and procedures, but we did highlight and recognize two areas that we need to improve upon. And the first is upgrading our locking system. And the first is upgrading our locking system for our medication storage on our ambulances. So the new system will digitally track by access of, by way of a swipe or a FOB system every time somebody enters that box. We can then pull this up later or use it for investigative purposes if need be. Hopefully, we never have to do that. But it's a more accurate, recorded, digitally recorded way of tracking access into that box. So the quote we received to upgrade these locks came in at $18,652. Because of additional parts, because we're retrofitting our current boxes that we have, I'm asking, and there may be some additional parts and pieces we may need, so I'm asking for a not to exceed amount of $20,000. So the second is a camera system. So this will be another layer of security on top of the locks. The cameras would be positioned at each one of our ambulance bases and have views of entry points and locations where EMS vehicles are parked. We'd be able to see everyone who enters and exits our buildings or enters a parked EMS vehicle. We previously have experienced theft from vehicles and actual vehicle theft itself and forced entry into our buildings. So it's easy to say this camera system is long overdue and even more so now with the multiple layers of security that the DEA is requesting we have in place. So working with IT, Director Hale from IT and also Corthouse Security, we came up with a quote of not to exceed $70,000 for the camera system. So I'm asking permission to approach the county council for these two items.
Thank you. So the total would be about 90?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve his request.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request to approach the council in regards to a camera system and narcotics locks by Andrew Maguire, EMS Director. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you, Andrew, and good luck. Next, we have consider permission to approach the council for additional appropriation for vaccine and COVID clinics. Amanda Lawners from the LaPorte County Health Department. I see you there, Amanda.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Amanda Lawners, LaPorte County Health Department. I am seeking permission to approach the council for additional appropriations to keep our vaccine, our COVID vaccine testing sites open until the end of June. That is essentially when the state is shutting down COVID operations at this time. They could be changing that. Right now, we will be able to stay open through mid-May, but we'd like to try and keep, stay open until the end of June. We are still very active at the vaccine site. We're still seeing on Monday, they had 80 people come in for vaccinations. And we're also anticipating that pediatric doses will be available soon and also opening up second boosters for the whole population. So we would like to try and stay open as long as possible.
Thank you, Amanda. I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the health department's, to approach the council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the health department going to the council for additional appropriation for vaccine and COVID clinics. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Next, under new business, we consider the second addendum to the agreement between Tax Management Associates and LaPorte County Assessor, Mr. Schultz.
Basically, it's just a continuation of the personal property audits that we get. They have returned quite a bit money to the county general fund. So I said, yeah, we can go another year with them.
Okay.
Motion to approve his request.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the second addendum to the agreement via the county assessor's office. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Thank you, Mike. You have the next item as well. Consider contract with Schneider Geospatial LLC for linkages on the Beacon site. Mr. Schultz.
The statute now requires us to put the actual property record card on the whatever site we use, and we happen to use the Schneider Beacon site. We will still have our information, but the actual hard card, property record card, will be on there now as well. That has to be done by July 1st.
Thank you.
Do you approve the contract?
We have a motion to approve the contract. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Schneider Geospatial via Mike Schultz, the assessor's office. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Schultz.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, consider retroactive resolution for the emergency management department to have an interim director. Rob Sabey has been named the interim director, and we are here tonight to just have a retroactive resolution, so I would consider a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I think Mr. Sabey is the most capable person we have right now here at the county to deal with that. Before I second it, though, I would like to, I would like to point out an ongoing issue we have here of something that hadn't happened once last year. Whenever the commissioners sent out an email last year, all three commissioners were included in it. This, I pointed out at the last meeting, the disparities of this year from, you know, this year compared to last year, as far as there's only emails going back and forth between yourself, between Commissioner Mathias and Commissioner Marzinski, completely leaving me out, including communications with the county attorney, under the guise of sending it to the executives. This wasn't done one time last year. I don't know if it's ever been done in the past, but last year, it wasn't done a single time. Not one time last year did an email go out that only went out to two of the three commissioners in regards to anything like this. So I was at a DPC EMA meeting the other day. I'd spoken with now acting Director Sabey a couple of times this week. So I was made aware of it through Director Sabey because he told me. But this idea that you continue to cut me out of extremely important communications, I mean, it's, we've got one member living in Florida. I'm the only one who's here literally every day, and you're completely cutting me out of all these things. And this is for an EMA position, emergency management. If there's an issue in the county where something comes up and there's a disaster, why would you not want your entire executive body to know there was a new EMA director? It's just, it's just preposterous to me that you just act with absolute impunity without regard for anything, including the safety or well-being of LaPorte County. So I will second that because I think he's the right man for the job, but you really need to do better with communicating and go back to the way things used to be where all three commissioners were included.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve Mr. Rob Sabey as interim emergency management director. This is a personnel matter. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Next on the agenda, we have consider Leeds Online contract with Sheriff's Department. Sheriff Boyden.
Good evening, Commissioners. Here asking for your consideration and approval of a Leeds Online contract. This is something that had been previously maintained by the prosecutor's office. They no longer have the funding for it, and therefore, we want to continue it. So it would be an agreement between the sheriff's office and Leeds Online. It's an electronic reporting and criminal investigation system that receives transaction data, that acts to collect, to maintain, and to provide access of this data by law enforcement. This was sent to the county attorney for his review, and he didn't have any issues with it.
Motion to approve the contract with Leeds Online.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Leeds Online. This is a continuation of the previous agreement?
That's right.
Thank you, and it's working well? No issues?
Very well, yes.
Thank you so much. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Next on the agenda, we have consider the tax fraud ordinance. John Carr is here from the Regional Council of Carpenters, and I believe your attorney is with you as well.
My attorney is not here, but I got the next best thing, Mr. Senator Bahatchek.
Senator Bahatchek, we're glad to see you.
Thank you. It's a rarity to hear these days.
Yes.
So we appreciate your time this evening, Commissioners, in taking consideration on tax fraud ordinance. Just about every municipality in Northwest Indiana has adopted a tax fraud ordinance, including LaPorte and Michigan City and LaPorte County. And this ordinance will ensure that we protect our local contractors from contractors coming in from outside of the area that pay their workers in cash by way of either 1099-ing them or misclassifying them. But this is a rampant problem in the construction industry, and in light of recent events that's happened here locally, this ordinance is definitely an ordinance that's needed to ensure that our local contractors here in LaPorte County are protected and our local tradesmen can be assured that, you know, the county is looking out for them and making sure that workers aren't getting paid cash, which deprives our communities of millions of dollars. It's estimated that Indiana loses out on over $400 million each year from taxes because of contractors misclassifying their workers and paying them as independent contractors. And when they do that, then there's no local taxes paid, no workers' comp, no unemployment, and it deprives our communities of the quality of life that we're used to. But just one step is enforcement or enacting a tax fraud ordinance that could help go along ways to prevent this from happening. I just want to make a couple of quick comments.
Thanks, Mr. Carr.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam President and the Commission. I don't have to speak as nicely as Mr. Carr does because I don't represent a union or anybody. I represent citizens of the state of Indiana and in my district. And I find this practice explicitly repulsive because what it does is it not only takes advantage of the goodwill of our communities when we trust a developer with tax-advantaged projects where we say, hey, look, we're going to team up with you on the Tiff District, and we're going to pay for much of the infrastructure, or at the state level, we're going to assist you with tax credits, or perhaps it's even an outright tax abatement for multiple years, many times 10, sometimes even 20 years. And they come here and they just brutalize our local citizens and our economy and just take advantage of our goodwill. I saw a project in a different county in Southern Indiana where there were three different school buses of drywallers that were driven there, and it was a labor broker that actually orchestrated it. So the developer, and it was a well-known developer, and this was, they were a sub of a subcontractor that provided labor. So they told them they needed 60 people that day. Well, they brought them 60 people. And the labor broker gets paid the check, and they distribute it out parrot. I mean, this is a big problem, and I appreciate what you guys are doing, and I thank you for taking this up, and I appreciate the ordinance. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Basically, theft of taxpayers, a fair share of taxpayer dollars.
It's more than that, Commissioner Mathias. Not only, what would happen is if one of these folks gets hurt, they're going to go to the hospital, and then the state and all of our taxpayers are going to be paying for their medical bills and ultimately for ongoing care. This is the right thing to do. Thank you.
It's a big.
Senator Bahatchek, I'm glad, if I may, I'm glad you're here to speak on this. I believe you're planning on introducing legislation next year that's going to address some of this.
We're going to start again next year. We had a bill two years ago to address it with a task force to actually have the state intervene with more than just a tip line. To actually have a hard-cut way to be able to investigate these plans and to act a little bit more swiftly. My opinion is, is that this should go beyond the subcontractor level. So in the situation we had at the Banks project, we're going just after the sub. In my opinion, we should be going after the general contractor. Because if you think about it, if you're the owner of the project and you hire a general contractor and they don't perform properly, are you going to sue the sub of the, sub of the drywall contractor? No, you're going to sue the general contractor. So in my opinion, I think the general contractor should have ultimate responsibility and liability for all of those that he hires. So yes, the bill I'm going to be offering will be very similar to the one we had two years ago, but it will have a little more teeth in it, and we're going to keep fighting to push it through, so.
Fight and push it through, and I believe some of the verbiage that I saw in that, there's actually going to be a task force, like you said, and funding for that task force because these are additional burdens that would have to be taken on by some employee, in your case, in the state, right?
Well, there's a couple of different ways we could do it. It depends on how you word a task force. You could create employees, or we can use existing employees. Now, will it, could it potentially require the county to do more work? Well, sure. I mean, if we go to the county and the task force says, hey, look, you have a contractor that's not following the law, then you should use your building inspection department to go there and double-check because that's their job. I believe they also make sure that folks are licensed and insured and are, you know, and have met, that have met all of the requirements to be a contractor in your county. So yes, you will be informed when we have a problem. And that will be the county's responsibility to do it, which it kind of already is, so.
Already is, right. So the event that happened recently here at Newport Landing, that was a fairly egregious incident. I think those people are looking at numerous different charges from wage theft, unemployment issues, workers' comp issues. I think they're even facing racketeering charges, if I remember correct, potential racketeering charges. Definitely interesting. It's good to see there's a lot of state laws on the books already to address this. Is that some of the reason why this legislation stimulus has failed down at the State House multiple times now is because, you know, those laws are pretty much on the books already?
Well, I don't know, Commissioner Haney. Maybe you could enlighten me and. I'm asking you.
You're down there. I'm asking. Because I know the State House has let that drop many times. One of the issues that I see with certain things like this is.
Sure, sure, go ahead. Answer the first question, please. So you just told me that this has failed before at the State House. Many legislations fail at the State House, and not because of who's responsible for anything, it's just people's opinions of the 150 legislators. So, you know, it's not just a singular issue or what Senator Bahatchek wants or doesn't want.
Sure.
So.
Right. So are there any, Mr. Carr, are there any counties up here in Northern Indiana that have adopted this, or is it just a couple, just municipalities like Michigan City, Gary?
So there's no counties as of yet. There is, Michigan City and LaPorte has done it, along with Valparaiso, Chesterton, Portage, Maryville, Hobart, Hammond, Dyer, Lowell. So but as of now, no counties.
No counties, okay.
Commissioner. I would make a motion that we, that we accept the, approve the tax fraud ordinance. My wife and I were both union people our entire professional lives when we had a full-time job. I see the importance of it, and I see the abuse that goes on. I would make a motion that we accept this ordinance as presented.
Thank you. So just hold that for a moment. Senator Bahatchek, some additional comments?
I'm going to withdraw my comments for the sake of brevity.
Okay, thank you. So Attorney Friedman, this is an ordinance. I'd like to hold, allow the members of the public to speak, but can we hear it on both readings this evening?
Yes, if it's unanimous on both readings. And I should note, too, for the record, the building commissioner has conveyed his support of this particular ordinance to all three commissioners, I believe, in a communication you should have received yesterday.
So before we take your motion, Commissioner Marzinski, are there any other members of the public who wish to speak on this ordinance at this time? Please approach, give us your name and address, please.
Jody Slavell, 2402 North State Road 39. And my question is, I hear a lot of, first of all, I don't know why we have an ordinance or we need an ordinance when obviously state law has prosecuted these people, arrested these people that did wrong. So I don't really know why we need a county ordinance. So my question is to the union guys, okay? I watched three, four, five years ago, credit union over on State Road 2 by Walmart, they wanted to build a brand-new bank. The unions, they went out there with a rat, stuck this thing up. They hired a pedophile to stand out there and harass anybody who tried to work on that site. The union was all over that bank trying to say, you got to hire us. If you don't hire us, then you can't build a bank. This is a private company, okay? Where was the union and the rat when the banks was being built, when this apartment complex was being built? Why are we coming in at the 11th hour and saying, oh, my God, the union, the union got left out of this project? Where was the rat? Where were the protests? Where were the union guys to protest all these illegal workers coming in and building this project for the city? Why weren't they there? That's my question.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Are there any comments before we move on to the vote to accept this on second reading?
Thank you, Commissioner Mathias. And I appreciate the remonstrator's comments. And I will let, if Mr. Carr wants to speak, he can. If not, I will certainly close. And part of this is to address Commissioner Haney's concerns as to why the state didn't pass these kinds of laws in the past with task force and supporting labor and supporting language that you guys are looking at today. I can only point to when I was a commissioner back in 2016, 2015, I believe, when we passed a RBO, which is a responsible bidder ordinance in this very county, which you folks still adhere to, which I have not seen anybody make a motion to repeal, Commissioner Haney.
For clarification, I voted against the second RBO that was passed that updated it.
Well, that's great.
Because it was political in nature and useless and burdensome and actually went against minority and women-owned businesses. So it's...
Well, thank you, Commissioner Haney. I will defer to you longer if you need to comment longer during my close, but what I can tell you is that there is legislative support for RBOs and for PLAs that we do because just in this past session, the House of Representatives passed an amendment through to the Senate. They asked the Senate to revoke all of your ability to be able to pass private labor, pass PLAs and RBOs, and the Senate killed it. So if you think there's not support for this kind of legislation at the local level, there absolutely is. So when I'm asked, what has the state legislature done? I'm not going to speak in hyperbole. I'm going to speak with actions and what we have done in the Senate. Thanks.
Thank you. So I would entertain a motion. Do you want to speak, Mr. Carr?
No, I think Mr. Bahatchek covered it well.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to hear this on second reading.
No, I think you'll want first reading and then a motion to suspend if you're going to hear it on second reading. So I don't believe there's been a motion approved yet on first reading.
Okay, so, all right. So I will entertain a motion to approve it on first reading.
I will restate my motion to consider the tax fraud ordinance on first reading by title only.
Do we have a second?
No.
I'll second it. We have a motion and a second to approve this on first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nay.
I would make a motion to suspend the rules and read a second reading on the tax fraud ordinance.
I'll read the title. An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of LaPorte County concerning prevention of certain contractor fraud. We have a motion and I would, are you going to second it?
No. If it's not seconded, then the motion to suspend fails.
I'll second it.
That's fine. But if it's only two to one, then you can't, you can only suspend the rules if it's unanimous vote. Otherwise, the second reading will need to be held over to the next meeting.
Thank you.
No problem.
All right. So we will hear this on second reading at our next meeting at the beginning of the month. Thank you, sir. And thank you for being here to support this. Next on the agenda, we have the resolution that was added by Commissioner Marzinski. Commissioner Marzinski?
As I stated in the beginning when I introduced it, it's only for introduction and review. There has to be a 10-day notice before we're going to have a public hearing. That public hearing would be set for our next commission meeting, which would be Wednesday, May 4th at 10:00 a.m. for an introduction. The resolution would be a resolution initiating action for removal of LaPorte County Auditor Timothy Servos for public office pursuant to Indiana Code Section 36-2-8.7. That being the case, we've read the title, we've set the date for the public hearing. No further action is required at this time.
So that's a motion to accept it and to set a public hearing?
Just to set the public hearing for Wednesday, May 4th, 10:00 a.m., next commissioner's meeting.
Do we have support?
No. Good job reading that, though.
All right. That was uncalled for, so but...
Well, we know she didn't write it.
Excuse me. Sometimes I feel like I'm, you know, I raised six toddlers and sometimes I feel like I'm back in the day. So we have a resolution and Commissioner Marzinski has asked that it be, that we set a public hearing and that is a motion. Right now, we do not have a second on that motion. I'm also not going to second it, and here's why. I would, I would like us as a community to manage the tax issues that we have presently in front of us. You heard the treasurer, you heard the auditor, and you heard the assessor speaking at length to the public about the questions the public has, the concerns and the fears, quite frankly. The calls that I'm getting, people are fearful. You know, when it comes down to taxes, most of us want to be good citizens and when our taxes are messed up, it makes us anxious. So I think we are, we need to manage that issue. We need to work with the council and with the elected officials and all of the departments and our financial advisors to get this straightened up and get this squared away before we begin something that is very emotionally charged. You know, the auditor does tend to create some flashpoints and so there are some items in here that I think probably need to be talked about, but I just don't think the time is now. So I would entertain a motion, or I will make it myself, to table this indefinitely until our tax issues are resolved, that the community has a sense of security about their tax issues and their tax bills and that we, at that time, can take this off the table.
And, Madam President, you might, for purposes of the record, if you're going to take it under advisement, then have it read into the record and that way, take it under advisement and table it indefinitely until such time as you wish to take it off the table.
So with all due respect, I'm not going to have this read into the record at this time. It's very lengthy. I think it defeats the purpose of tabling it. We want to let the community get their emotions on their taxes under control. We need to take care of that issue. So I'm going to, and I'll be happy if somebody wants to make that motion. Otherwise, I will make that motion. All right. I will make the motion. I will make the motion to table...
Madam President, point of order, are you able to? I appreciate your sentiments here, but are you, as commission president, are you able to make a motion with the two of us here present?
I believe so, but I'm not sure.
You could step down from the chair conceivably, but if it would be, no, I mean metaphorically. But at this point, you want to deal with motions that are pending by members and then if necessary, step down. But you may want to deal with any pending motions.
We had a pending motion and we didn't, it died for lack of a second.
Okay.
So would you like to make a motion? Is that what I'm hearing?
The, one of the issues with just straight-up tabling this is it could be pulled off the table at any time. I would rather if this is going to just take no action on it at all and if someone wants to add it to the agenda later with appropriate notice, then that would be something else. But just to table it, to let it linger out there and float in perpetuity, no. So if we take no action on it, then we take no action on it and it would just need to be re-agenda'd the next time it came around.
So is that a motion?
And you're going to need to make clear because now you're putting it on the record. It needs to be available then if that's, if anybody requests it. I mean, you're now taking something up.
Well, we haven't done it yet, so he's got a motion and we need a second on his motion.
I don't even know that I made, I didn't even make a motion. I'm just saying that we, if we just take no action on it whatsoever, then nothing happens with it. If we table it, then it could be pulled off the table theoretically at any meeting with no notice. So take no action. Let's just move on.
I'm going to also, also could you recall your motion to table it just so we can move on?
So I'll metaphorically step away from the chair. I'm making a motion to accept this resolution under advisement and table it indefinitely.
Second.
And we have a motion.
Second your motion.
We have a motion and a second to take this under advisement and table it indefinitely. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nay.
We have two ayes and one nays, so the ayes have it. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have Commissioner comments. Commissioner Haney?
Thank you, Madam President. Today for, real quick, I know we had a large claims on there and I didn't get to mention on earlier, but one of the reasons why our claims were so, were so large for this period was about $2 million and it goes kind of in hand with what we were talking about earlier. It was $2 million in lit payments, basically distributions out to local counties. So quite a bit of money was in there for that. There was also several other large payments that went out to $650,000, the sheriff's pension, $856,000 to Mark Whis Electric, et cetera, et cetera. So a lot of, a lot of big-ticket items in there that drove that price up. I know I usually wind, get a lot of questions about that when they're in the higher, higher range. It's been fairly busy two weeks here. We, I attended our meetings for our healthcare setups for our healthcare clinic, which is going to be opening May 1st. This is, I'm pretty excited about this. It's going to give our employees an opportunity to go and use this clinic voluntarily if they want. They can still continue using any of the regular doctors, services they want. They do not have to utilize this at all. Every time I say that, I like to put that out there just in case because I know some folks watch a meeting here or there and they don't get it. But completely voluntary, you don't have to utilize if you don't want to, but if you decide to and you're on our county health insurance, there's no copay to visit. And if you get your prescriptions filled from there, there's no copay for the prescriptions that they can fill too, which will save a tremendous amount of money for employees. And because it's one of those, it's a 310B if I remember correctly, whatever the designation is there by the federal government, it's going to save us a truckload of money as well from the county's perspective. So it should save us everybody, both employees and the county a lot, decent amount of money. So we're looking forward to that. There will be an open house for that on the 28th. That email, I believe an email went out, it was to go out about that today, I think it did. So definitely go and check that out. You'll be able to meet the medical staff there and give, and you know, a small brief tour of the facility if you want to see it in advance. Obviously, to utilize it, you don't have to, but it's nice to have that go out. I'm glad the, some of the issues got addressed surrounding our tax bill situation from earlier. It's interesting to see and listen to some of the meetings we've been a part of with the DLGF about some of the other counties around the state who are also having to reissue some of their tax, some of their tax bills as well. It's been a very peculiar year around the state and I know that both here locally and at the state level, they're going to be working hard to make sure all those different checks along the way. How this got missed through so many checks, both at the local and the state level, how this wound up slipping through, it's, it's quite curious. So I'm looking forward to seeing, they're going to deal more with that, setting up checks after we get everything hammered out here. So you want to make sure you go through the process and correcting the problem, getting it solved, and then working on addressing, taking those corrective actions to make sure things, you know, something like this doesn't happen again, either here or in other counties throughout the state. In addition to that, let's see, oh, we had some good news. We've got more, we're moving forward on more broadband projects and possible funding opportunities here in the county from some of the different broadband initiatives as well as the transformative issues that we have going forward around the county, which is really nice to see. We've been collaborating this past week, both here with our county teams as well as state teams for an issue that came up in the county here, you know, just as we were entering into Easter weekend with one of our local mobile home facilities. Unfortunately, there was some negative circumstances that occurred there and it's being worked on with both multiple county teams as well as state agencies as well to try and get that, not just finish, continue getting resolved, but put in some corrective measures and some disciplinary actions as well as best we can for that. Yesterday was actually a pretty eventful day. I attended the District 1 District Planning Committee for the five counties for our EMA region here in northern Indiana that we're a part of. We do regional planning and sharing of resources in the event of natural disasters. There was a very informative, excellent, good, almost three-hour meeting yesterday. I was a part of in Valparaiso for that with all five districts. Yesterday also marked the 247th anniversary of the battles of Lexington and Concord, more colloquially known as the shot heard around the world. We're all obviously familiar with Paul Revere, but so many other people took part in that event, not just the men who were on the ground, but Paul Revere was actually one of three riders that night. Then, of course, we obviously have the Captain John Parker who was on Lexington Green when that first shot was fired and the amazing story later on of Samuel Whitmore. When I look at a lot of the issues that are confronting the county, actually, before I do that, I wanted to just touch briefly on this ordinance that we considered earlier, this tax fraud ordinance. When I look through this, there's, there are some good things in here. There are, there are some good things. Of course, as you read deeper into it, that's where things start to fall apart. Nobody wants any tax fraud. Everybody wants our employees to be, you know, their employees to be covered under workman's comp. These things are already against state law to do and these are already documentation that, that needs to be provided through the state. As a small business owner myself, I know how important it is. I don't work in the construction field, but I know how important it is to make sure all those i's are dotted and t's are crossed every single, every single quarter. And there are just such odd verbiage in here, such as the contractor must properly classify employees as employees. On the surface, that sounds great, classifying employees as employees, because employees should be an employee. But of course, this ties in later with independent contractors and things like that. And we've seen at the national level especially, a very large shift with some public policy to try and go after and attack legitimate independent contractors. Federal government, especially the IRS hates people who are 1099. You know, we see that, we see these attacks going on from everything to the most easiest thing, of course, you would see is via your Uber driver or your DoorDash or the services that provide your food delivery like Shipt, for example. They work hard to go against these because they want the little bit of extra money right up front out of the paycheck. They don't like, they don't like seeing that money come in the form of a 1099. So they don't like to see that. But at the same time, there are only some ways, certain, certain services can actually work via independent contractors. So the, that's one of the reasons why I had the largest problem with, with this ordinance here before us tonight. It's not, it's not looking out necessarily for your average worker. It's not looking out for your average union member even. And it's looking out for those national, national ideas that are being driven at the national level and pushed down to the local level. You know, the, the average person, this, this isn't it. And, you know, I, I represent 110,000 people of LaPorte County and the thousands of tradesmen here in LaPorte County, not a handful of union bosses that are getting put peer pressure from the national level to pass political stunt pieces like this. So that's why I posed that here today. You have a lot of quotes at the end of meetings. Something touched on earlier than I heard Mr. Stevens say in reference to the clown show that sometimes goes on up here. And it seems like, you know, you shouldn't, it's an old proverb that says you shouldn't cast pearls before swine. And quite honestly, all the quotes, all the great from the founders of this country to Martin Luther King, I don't want to waste any of those tonight. So instead, let's go with something a little more recent. I'm going to quote Trent Reznor. You guys are fans of his music, at least back in the 90s anyway, they were, they're pretty decent. Bow down before the one you serve. You're going to get what you deserve. Thank you. And I conclude my comments for this evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Marzinski?
Well, a few upcoming events I want to remind everybody. Day 3 is election day. I encourage everybody to get out, go to the polls and vote. And for God's sakes, look who you're voting for, the person, you're voting for the person. The next day, May 4th, the first said, Commissioner, in that afternoon, I will begin to realize the fruition of a dream that's had for 15 years when we were actually doing the groundbreaking at the New Orleans Prairie Endowment Space at 2 o'clock that afternoon. It's been a long time coming, 15 years is a long time, and we're finally going to get there. And I want to thank everybody that's contributed to that. It's going to be a great day for all of LaPorte County. And I know Whitmore is very happy with that. And it was the Friday down the road, July 9th to the 16th, it was a great LaPorte County Fair. This is the 176th year, the oldest fair in the county, in the state. We've got a lot of good things planned, especially thanks to the county council and to FMUC, especially Ren Deback and especially, especially Larry Lewandowski, when the bleachers at the fairgrounds were found to be defective and they have to be replaced. They have to be. There's been a whole lot of seats already sold for concerts coming up at the fair. Now, when they condemn the bleachers, that means that, oh, you have to give all that money back. And you wouldn't have, you not only wouldn't have the shows, in return, you would not even have the fair. 176 years. not even have the fair, 176 years, and to see that disrupted because you don't have the bleachers. And thank God for Larry, who really went into high gear. He called a whole lot of different places. He could not get materials, he could not get cooperation. He finally, finally did get a company that could, could produce the new bleachers, take out the old, but in the new, and it was a deal that if you want it, you better speak up now. It was an emergency situation signed by our own Commissioner President and the Council President, and they made it happen, so we will have the fair, it will go on, and it'll be another great year. Thanks to at least the four, the six members of the council who voted to continue the fair. So lots of good things coming up in the county. We'll continue working every day to make county great, you know, whatever that takes. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks so much, Commissioner. I try to use some of my time to talk about LaPorte County businesses. We created a program called LaPorte County Works, and this is a two-pronged approach. We're not only applauding the companies that are here and are digging the roots even, even deeper and investing, but we're also trying to make sure that they have the, the employees that they need. So a lot of people don't realize there's some hidden treasures in LaPorte County, so every time we can talk about that, we're not only helping to retain those companies, but we're also making sure that our people who need jobs, who need a better job, can find opportunities that are close to home. I again thank my sites for doing the legwork and, and helping make sure that our current businesses know that we are, we care about them and we want to help them. This week, we are going to focus on Garwood Orchards. Garwood is located on West 50 South. Garwood Orchard and Farm Market is a family-managed farm that has been running for over 180 years. For six generations, the Garwood family has maintained a focus on farming, family, and community. It was started by John Garwood, a carpenter, who moved to LaPorte County in 1831 and took up farming. He was considered to be one of the founding fathers of the LaPorte County area in Cipio Township and in Panola. Garwood Orchards is a recipient of the Hoosier Homestead Award in 1992 and the AgriVision Award in 2020 for being a family-owned farm that has made significant contributions to the ag business and has been owned by the same family for over 100 years. Currently, the day-to-day operations are operated by the sixth-generation Garwoods, Tom, Brian, and Mike Garwood. They currently farm over 440 acres, which includes approximately 100 acres of apples, and many of us have been out there to pick their apples in the fall, and 340 acres of peaches, raspberries, pumpkins, strawberries, cherries, sweet corn, peppers, cucumber, and other vegetables. Their market will be opened on May 5th for the season. During the season, school groups and, and groups will come out and tour the farm. They can be booked, tours can be booked on their website at garwoodapplefarm.com/schools-tours. They currently employ 24 people at an average wage of $18 to $19 an hour. In the summer months, their, their complement surges to 40 to 50 people who work often in their retail at a wage of $1050 to $14 an hour, depending on their position and experience. They have lots of opportunities, so if you're listening to this presentation, you can go to their website at www.garwoodorchards.com. You can send them an email at apples@garwoodorchards.com, and their phone number is 219-362-4385. It's a great place for entry-level work, and it's a great place to build new skills. For those of us that consider Garwood just part of our family heritage, we know that when you go to Garwood, you're treated like you are a special person in LaPorte County. They make you feel very welcome. So let's all support our local ag businesses and head out to Garwood. I have an announcement to make about the Next Level Connection Grants. We have just received a message from the governor's office and a press release has, was released earlier today. I want to thank Governor Holcomb and the Okra Office, who has supported LaPorte County. We call it our Third Times the Charm Grant. We have worked with three companies, Surf Broadband, Comcast, and Mercury Wireless, and we have been awarded $6.5 million to LaPorte County to expand broadband. Now, you may remember in 2019, late 2019, we organized a broadband task force who has had laser focus on making sure that we are a broadband-ready community. In fact, in January, we got the broadband-ready classification from the state of Indiana. This has been a heavy lift, but during COVID, you may remember, we were talking about kids having to do e-learning, and they had to go to a parking lot of a library or a fast-food restaurant because their families did not have broadband capacity in their own home. So we have been awarded a very significant multimillion-dollar grant from the state, these ISPs. We don't want to be doing that as a county supporting private business, but we want to help them, so we've written support letters. We got a, a grant from the Healthcare Foundation of LaPorte to do an engineering study. So we know township by township by township exactly how much it will cost in today's dollars to make sure that we have fiber to the premise at every home. So this is a significant award from the state. This is the federal dollars coming, trickling down to, to the state, and this is your tax dollars coming back home. So our goal is to make sure that we have equity in broadband access and that every home that needs access, every business, every farm that needs broadband access and high-speed broadband can have access to that. It's still a work in progress. We have much more work to do, but this is a huge, huge gift to our community and to make sure that we have broadband for our children and for our small businesses and for our young people who may want to stay in their, in their yoga pants and have businesses at home. They need broadband access in their homes so they can get their supplies and they can get their products out to market. And then the last thing, that's a really cheerful, cheerful thing. The last thing I do want to say is a little bit of a political commentary. So we have some issues in this county, and we, we tend to bring them forward, but you know, there's that, if you see something, say something, and, you know, we were, we heard today about casting pearls before swine, and we often hear about Martin Luther King. So the values of this community are really important to most of us. This community is a, a community of family values, and when you think about integrity and you think about faith and family and respect, those of us who are elected officials, we have to be held accountable. So you heard reference earlier in our meeting today about a, a radio show that was held the day we were discovering that there was a huge tax, tax issue. There was a 90-minute radio show, and, you know, I, my political head would say it was a hack job, but, you know, people have a right to their political views. But there were two things that were said on that, on that show that have nothing to do with politics but are just plain wrong, and they don't fit this community's values. I have been struggling to say, you know, should I just ignore it or not? But there was a mimic done of Dr. Cora's accent on that show, where our auditor mimicked the way an Indian person who is an immigrant to this country speaks, and I found that so egregious, and maybe because I am the daughter of immigrants, it was especially offensive to me. But we talk about quoting Martin Luther, and we say all this, all this, you know, high-flut and language, but when the rubber meets the road, it's talking about people respectfully. And then my colleague to the left made fun of Dr. Cora's skin tone, that he couldn't, he didn't know his, he could blush the color of the blush that he, because of his, his skin tone. You know, that's not LaPorte County.
He did not do that.
Excuse me, I'm speaking, I have the floor. This is not the values of LaPorte County. LaPorte County is a caring community that respects all kinds of people. We are a diverse county with all kinds of people, and we need to respect them. Thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned.
Misrepresentation of that interview, Commissioner. That's a complete mis-